PM, the time is 7:00 PM. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Under the leashes to the flag of the United States of America, the continued republic of which stands one nation under God, equal and just, with justice, law.
Before I proceed in with the agenda this evening, because we had some, Sarah has some, had a conflict this evening as far as being able to be present, and also Jackie Peterson is not here as well, we want to make sure that everybody, in particular tonight of all nights, really makes, pays attention to keep close to the mic as possible for, for sound considerations. Other than that, I think we'll be in good shape, and I asked Michael to remind us, in the case that he has troubles hearing us and anybody in the audience as well, please, please help us to make sure we're speaking up. So moving forward with the, the agenda itself, in consideration of the agenda, the, the items tonight is really a public hearing for amendments to Section 10 of Village Business and Commercial Zoning District Amendment. We're here to hear public commentary on that, and we hear, we are here as a commission this evening in hopes of actually making a decision regarding some changes to that zoning portion of the, of the zoning itself. We also, what might take a few minutes this evening to talk a little bit about scheduling going forward as we move into the next year for some items we want to talk about, big time items we've got going forward, both the master plan and the airport. So with that, any changes or aspects of the agenda anybody would like to discuss? No?
I have a question. I'm confused because no one's ever explained to me what the steering committee is, and if I'm wondering why I would be messing with this right now, though quickly get it done kind of thing, or they're just going to be righted. Can you explain that to me, anybody? Sarah, do you know?
Sure, so the steering committee, right, is working on the draft zoning ordinance, a complete rewrite of it. This section that we are in the public hearing on tonight is because of the moratorium, which is kind of separate and trying to get this language done in order to get that, you know, completed as quickly as possible for that moratorium. So the rewrite will probably be in front of the planning commission, spring, maybe late spring, so in order to get, you know, get this done, the moratorium is up on the 7th or the 8th of December, and to keep that moving is why we're doing, doing it separate.
When the steering committee is done, then what do they do with the rewrite? They bring it to us, or?
Yeah, yeah, so the steering committee is going through section by section, and then once they get through looking at all of it, we'll give you a draft, the planning commission as a whole, and then we will go through it at the planning commission level to, you know, go through the sections as well.
Okay, but we're not going to have, I'm going to know what they've written, but will we have the benefit of the thought process if they want to get rid of that on it? Is it special?
I don't think so, you know, a lot of the changes they've talked about so far are either grammatical things or some flow to the document, so I don't think that there's really any changes that would make a difference, I guess, to the planning commission. If we get to some bigger items, I would, I would make note of them and bring them up to the planning commission as a whole, that maybe the steering committee decided to either add this or not add this for a certain reason.
And I'll, I'll add a few comments to it as well. My understanding of it is that because of activity in the community and potential applications that may or may not be coming forward, this particular Section 10 or Chapter 10 was one that was, had some more, I guess, kind of critical components to it that needed, we felt we needed to be looked at, was viewed to be looked at and important to do so, even, even knowing that there was a rewrite coming, the rewrite wouldn't necessarily get to this section in a time that would make most sense to, to use as a tool to help manage some of these things that were coming in. So the idea was to look at these changes now, get them in place, then there's a rewrite, and maybe there would be some tweaks. In fact, there might even be some more experience with things as we go ahead, and we can always look at things again, but the idea is to get those in place and then, then move forward with it. So, is that, is that clear? Any other questions about the agenda?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you could. Is somebody, and the secretary, before you check the jury?
Yes. Jackie Peterson is on the, is on the thing, yes, 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 yep. And she, actually, I should double check to make sure she and I are on text. If she has a problem hearing, she's going to let me know, so I should flip that over. I won't get distracted by ESPN or something here. So moving forward then, I'd like to have, somebody can call a motion to approve the agenda as is?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second?
I'll second that.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Does anyone with the agenda have, feel they have a conflict of interest this evening? Seeing or hearing none? Okay, let's move in to the public comment section of this meeting tonight. If there's any comments from the audience, please fill out the comment cards. You can bring them up and I guess hand them to Laura this evening, if, would be fine. I would ask is to keep your comments consistent with the subject matter of the agenda this evening, and keep your comments to about three minutes to four minutes. It looks like we have relatively small audience tonight. We have a little bit of latitude there, but if there's anybody who'd like to come forward, please do so now. Hearing none? Then, or seeing none, maybe as the case may be, we'll move forward with the actual purpose of the, the meeting itself and moving into the content of the material. We did have a written submitted comment on the material, and committee members was, came in and I spoke to a gentleman today, it came from Howard Willard, and you have something in front of you this evening, and it shows his comments written right into where we had, had the material, so I'd like to just share that with you, what this boils down to. Yeah, so his comments are written in red. I'm sorry, Jason, it would be, yeah, it, it's a separate thing, should be right, if you don't have it.
It's on my desk?
It was left right up here.
Oh, I'll share.
Okay.
Do we need to review them?
Actually, you can both read this, because I looked at it. Learned of it, yes.
Yeah, we got enough.
Okay. If you take just a moment and kind of paw through it, there's, it, some of it looks quite significant. Hold on a second, I got a text, let me make sure it's, she can hear loud and clear. That's good news, thank you, Jackie. So basically, the, it looks like there's quite a few changes in here, but there's really, it's really one main thing, and that is that what Howard is suggesting we consider is that the, the changes affecting, if you take Village Business here, that right now, the way it's laid out, that the, the rights for somebody to proceed forward with a, to move forward within this ordinance excludes all of the retail, I'm sorry, excludes all of the personal service and similar uses, and that the 3,000 square feet only applies to the, let me see here, basically the retail. So basically the 3,000 square foot kind of limitation only applies to retail, it does not apply to the personal service shops and similar uses. And what he is suggesting is, is that we consider making up to 3,000 square feet apply So take a second and see if that makes sense to you. So really, the most material piece, if you look under the Village Business, would be on page 10.1, and it says up to 3,000 square feet, right there towards the bottom. That's the biggest aspect to it, everything else is formatting. And then similarly, or analogously, I guess, if you go forward to, I'm going to find the right page here. Page 12.1 under commercial. The, the 5,000 square foot limitation, he is suggesting that we apply that as well to the personal service shops, including, and not just limit it to the remainder of the, of the pieces. So it's kind of a similar aspect to it there. And that's on page 12.1. Sarah, is there anything else that you would add as far as kind of characterizing what Howard's suggestion was?
No, I think those are the biggest changes. Most of the other markings are formatting and, and reorganizing, which I would stay away from in this draft. You know, we're dealing with how it looks right now and just trying to amend that, but we will implement some of those ideas during the rewrite, because we'll bring over this new language that you're working on tonight, or that's going through this process, we'll put that into the draft rewrite, but we will reorganize it a little bit. So some of his comments will be added in at that time.
So I guess, first of all, I'd ask the committee, or the commissioner, are there any questions about what Howard's suggesting here?
No, I, I actually like what he's suggesting, it makes sense.
Can you share with us your thoughts around that, why you like it?
Because I think it makes it clearer. I mean, when you, when you have, one part of the business has to be up to 3,000 square feet, and the other part it doesn't say, it gets confusing. So I think by, by making it all, you know, the 3,000 square feet or the 5,000 square feet, depending on which section you're in, it makes it clearer, and I like that.
Any other members have thoughts on it, one way or another?
Yes, we have really thought about it, because I was thinking, because in our minds, but that was, was the retail, but, yeah, I'm just trying to imagine some of these places being a bar, even.
I think, I think one thing to remember here is, is that, you know, if you think about applying, applying within the rights of the ordinance itself, under this Section 10.02(c), and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong here, if somebody doesn't fit within here, if a new business applicant doesn't fit within this, doesn't mean they can't do it, obviously. We are saying though, that it does require notice, public hearing, input, and then coming forward to the commission at that point. I guess my view of it is, I hadn't really thought about it either until I learned of this, and, you know, on one hand, there's a balance between, we don't want to be so restrictive or too restrictive, but on the other hand, we want to make sure that we don't run into a situation where, you know, we end up with something that isn't consistent with what we feel is right, or the right, kind of consistent with the master plan and what we want for the community. So I like the aspect of it being consistent, and so that these particular types of business, similar uses, wouldn't necessarily be able to just come in where all these other ones would have to, because I would say, why would a, I could ask the question, why would a therapeutic massage have favorite, more favorable treatment than a hardware store, or a consignment store or something like that? So I like the aspect that it's consistent. Jason, what's, what's your feeling on it?
Well, I sit here and I'm thinking, have we, are we set on the 3,000 square feet? Did we, did we take a vote on that, or?
I don't know that we actually took a vote on it. I got the feeling after the last meeting that we were pretty well set on it, but obviously it was not applicable to these particular components of the business there, under 10.02(c).
Right.
Yeah, I think it was all just what Sarah provided as examples of other buildings, other businesses.
3,000 for Village Business, 5,000 for Commercial. Square feet.
So Andy, I guess, when I read through this before, my impression as I read through it was that the, the businesses covered in Section E were already limited to 3,000 square feet because of the heading on, on Section D. It already says three, up to 3,000 square feet. So I guess, am I missing something that would have allowed E to be treated differently than businesses under Section D?
Well, I think-
So when we wrote that, I mean, we were only talking about the retail, and because it's in the D part, it would only apply for those uses under D, so that 1 through 9 under D has that 3,000 square foot limitation instead of all of the uses. So if the planning commission was interested in saying all uses in the Village Business that are site plan review, we want to have them 3,000 or less, we would just move that 3,000 square foot up into the introductory paragraph to explain it better, that it applies to all the uses in this district. As drafted, it's just the retail is limited to the 3,000 square feet.
Let me try, let me try and make it real with an example, just to test it with the group, and, and I think this would fall under 10.1E, and Sarah, please tell me if I'm off base on this as an example or not. Let's suppose American Express Travel Agency came in and they would decide, we're going to locate, we would like to locate our, our central call center for travel, a travel service, and put it here in Torch Lake Township, and it'd be 15,000 square feet, it would employ 150 people. 150 people would probably be great, the 15,000 feet, foot off, square foot off, or say it was 25,000 square foot office building. With that, in theory, unless I'm misreading this, we would, it would be right in here, and there would be no necessarily any pub, avenue to provide public input on that. Unless I'm misinterpreting the guideline, so I just wanted to put that out. I mean, Sarah, would that be true, based on what I just described?
Yeah, I think that it would be, but under, you know, we have travel as a professional service office in there with no size limitation. Same could be said about a bank, you know, if they want to put some sort of headquarters with multiple offices, or they're putting their loan system in there or something like that. That could be 10,000 square feet, a bank could, as currently drafted.
Are we not saying already that businesses located within Village Business zoning are limited to 3,000 square feet, and that anything larger than that would have to be in Commercial?
I think the way this is currently drafted, the answer to your question would be no, and that's exactly what I think Howard's, the, the person that sent this in is, is saying. Because I think, right or wrong, I came into it kind of viewing it that way, but then when I looked at the wording, as it was before Howard's suggestions, it really only applied to retail was limited to 3,000 square feet. The other sections, professional service offices and personal service shops and similar uses, could go up bigger than 3,000 square feet without applying for a special use. Denise, thoughts?
I, I, I do, I do appreciate this, the way that's spelled out. I was still a little, going back and forth before, you know, it was explained, but I was still trying to wrap my brain around it. And I think if we're trying to stay consistent with our hamlet approach, do we want something that has, that needs to be bigger than that in, in the, in the business district? I, I think I appreciate the way you spell this out.
So anybody, anybody have a concern about these clarifications? And I think, Sarah, you had mentioned, we'd want to be a little bit cautious about over engineering the formatting on some of this at this point, because we're, we're hoping to be able to vote on this tonight, and I would hate to, if too much formatting, I wouldn't feel comfortable that something could get off of what we intend, so I think we should take that forward and, and into the rewrite going forward, as far as the more general formatting. But I think the nature of what Howard is per, suggesting here, I, I would agree with it, and it sounds like everybody else does here, so we would incorporate those changes.
So just to be clear, what I'm going, what, what I think I hear you saying is that for site plan review, all of these uses need to be 3,000 square foot or less, and then any of these uses that are larger than that would need to go to site plan, or I'm sorry, special use approval?
Yes.
Do we?
Okay. Or you not want to allow them over 3,000 square feet at all?
Well, we can decide that with the special use permit, can't we? I mean, if, if somebody comes in and they want to put a 7,000 square foot something in one of the villages, you know, with the special use review, we can always say, no, that's too big for the, for the Village Business District. Right? So, I mean, it's, it wouldn't automatically preclude it, but it could be precluded by the decision made on the special use?
Right, it's just that we, because of some of these uses, like these professional offices, say, they're only listed right now under the site plan review because they don't have any size associated with them. So once we put that size limitation on them to 3,000 square feet for site plan review, I would need to carry all those uses over into the special use section if they need to, want to be larger than that, and go through the special use process. So I think that's, I mean, yes, Barbara, what you're saying, they would be reviewed individually on, you know, their merit based on the application, but I would need to make sure that that use is available to be applied for as a special use permit.
Right, right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm that that's what you were thinking, that if they were going to be larger than 3,000, then it should be a special use with that public hearing aspect.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we've talked about, yeah.
I think that's the intent as well, and I, and again, I don't think our intent is all, at all is trying to restrict somebody, we just want the people to have the opportunity to know about it and make sure that it's consistent with what we want in the community.
That makes sense.
Any more discussion on that particular topic? If not, I suggest we go through the document and see if these changes that, and Sarah, my understanding is the yellow highlights are changes that occurred since our last meeting? Can you describe the, that again, real quick?
Yeah, yeah, so anything that's in red are changes from the current ordinance, anything that's highlighted in yellow happened since our last meeting, you're correct.
Okay, so I guess I'm just going to suggest, I'm just going to walk us through this. On page 10.1, are we good with page 10.1 at this point? I'm just going to keep forward, please stop me if you feel otherwise. Sarah, I had, I had a small suggestion on page 10.2 under item D up above, it's a little bit, because it says uses consistent with Village Retail up to 3,000 square feet, and I think it should be a comma after square feet, and then a lowercase s such as, otherwise it's kind of such as, I mean, I mean, the period's fine, but the such as kind of hangs in a weird way to me, just grammatically if nothing else.
Yep, we can do that. Sometimes it's hard to catch that when you're doing the track changes on there, so.
Any other thoughts on, any other thoughts on item 10.2 or page 10.2? Not page 10.3?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the part D, it says usually consistent with Village Retail up to 3,000. Now, remember, we're talking to Village, the Hamlet style.
Right.
So we can't have a grocery store next to my house, let's say, that's larger than 3,000 square feet, but then if you're a bank, real estate, insurance, travel, medical dental offices, maybe that could be up to.
Then to clarify, that is exactly why we are suggesting the changes we're talking about tonight, so that-
But that's in your changes, you're not limiting those businesses to 3,000.
In the changes we would be. That, that's why, that's why the, yeah, this one has it. So basically, basically, yes.
That's one of the, that's what the suggestion was.
Yes.
This is the public input in writing.
The public input was, was to address that exact, you see, don't, you don't have American Express coming in and doing a 12,000 square foot deal with them, that's exactly-
Next to your house.
Just a comment, I like that, that looking at the word level towards the bottom there, I like, I can't remember if you brought that up last time, but I thought that was a good
Yeah, does that look good, Bob? You're, because that's for the fire department.
Yeah, and I'm still, I'm still reading it, that it's going to be a three-story building. You take it literally, the floor level at 21 feet means the completed room will be another eight or nine or 10 feet.
Which would make it three stories, yeah.
Three stories. You could make that the height of the uppermost ceiling capable of being used, but not exceed
And that's because our, we don't have the equipment to reach that height, correct?
Correct.
So the height of the equipment can reach up to 21 feet?
Yes.
And so if a person, if, if a person were at the height of 20, and the, at the top most floor, that person was standing on, was at 21 feet, that person in theory could come out and come down a ladder or something, right?
Yes.
But if they're on the roof, they're out of luck.
It'd be tough, because we don't have a ladder truck, all we have is an extension ladder, which is capable of extending out to about 35 feet, but, you know, then, then there's, there's no margin left on it, we're just, we're not really set up for three-story buildings. We'd have to call mutual aid. I mean, they are in the, in the county, but we don't have them.
I see. Was everybody's intention here, or thoughts around that, that this was basically meaning that it would limit the floors, at the end of the, whatever the words are here at the time, that what the intent was, is that it means that you can only have up to a two-story building, is that the thought?
I think that's the thought.
Anybody disagree with that or think differently? Do we even have any three-story buildings right now?
Man, I don't know, the, the tallest thing would be like the steeple at the restaurant, or not sure what the, the height of Green Company is up there, but it's, it's, that's probably close to 30 feet. feet.
But it only, is it just one story inside, but just super tall, right? It's not? Wonder.
This first sentence is calling for a maximum height of 41 feet for the entire building. So, if 21 feet is the floor of the uppermost, then that would be an additional.
So, the question is then, I see your point, Barbara.
Additional 20 feet above the 21 is allowed by this, which would mean three stories at least.
But this is the height of the uppermost level capable of being used for human occupancy, meaning that people, that, that means if a person's standing on the, on top of a roof of 41 feet, and there's a fire and the person can't get off, the fire department, in its current equipment, wouldn't be able to get to them without getting outside support. But if a person were living on the top of a second floor, or living on a second floor, even if the ceilings were really high, they would be, they would be fine. So, I think the question is, do we need to alter this or not?
Do we, do we have anything anywhere else about building height?
Uh-uh.
Residential or anything? Yeah, regard, regardless of how many floors you've got, if you've got 41 feet, they're out of luck. Why are they on the roof? Out of luck.
I think it looks good that way it is.
I, I would say if you can get them on the, at 21 feet, and that's the, the floor of the top level, that's probably good.
It seems to be a reasonable aspect, because if somebody's, again, if somebody, we have even in our existing structure, if somebody's on the steeple, or that, whatever that thing is called on Torch Lake Cafe, and they're hanging up there, yeah, that's an extenuating circumstance. You know, I think to not enable a building that come, you know, a new building that comes in and everything complies with two floors, and they have a nice pitched roof, which we're asking for, but it's, at the peak is 41 feet, well, okay, that, that could be a challenge, but still, the occupied floor is capped at 21 feet. So, we all good with that? Bobby, you okay with that?
Makes sense.
Page 10.5. There's quite a bit of discussion last time on 10.5, on paragraph C up there regarding the parking. We ended up deciding to strike it last time. It was edited, and I think we struck it, correct, Sarah?
Correct, yeah. We're going to deal with it in the rewrite.
Okay. Any?
Or after we work on the master plan, one of the two.
Okay. Is everybody still good with that tonight, keeping an eye? 10.6.
On 10.6, three, for all commercial uses? Do you want it to say "commercial"? For all business uses?
You could say "business", that would work.
Yeah.
That was the only thing I had to say about anything.
That's a big change.
You're cut off now.
Sure. So, okay. Anything else on 10.6? Okay. That's it for village business. Any other comments on village business before we move into commercial?
Well, can we go back to 10.6?
Sure.
C? Are we still putting a minimum pitch on roofs?
Appearance.
Appearance.
Appearance of.
That's.
Magic.
That's, and that was to.
I remember, we, I mean, we talked about that extensively.
Run, run.
Okay. I'm good.
I think, yeah, okay. Not to beat a dead horse on that, but.
Hold on. I'm sorry. Number E, Bob brought, brought up a good point. This steel exterior shall only be allowed on cais, not facing the road right away. He was showing me pictures of, of some stuff that is actually steel, but it's, it's pretty attractive and, and looks very nice. And, I mean, not all, not, not all steel's going to look like a side of a pole barn. So, I think we maybe want to take a look at that, because if you see some of the pictures that he was showing me, it's, it's really, really nice.
Yeah, and I, I certainly wouldn't debate that, because I have been impressed with some things as well that I've seen, you know, and, and even things like, you know, vinyl type materials that aren't like typical vinyl siding, but they're like a hard synthetic material that's very weather resistant, can look, I mean, even a lot of floors nowadays look like wood, and they're very durable, and they're not, you know, you could limit, you know, you could imagine the scenario where you're limiting somebody that, something that could look fantastic and be very durable. And so, I think that that's a good point. The question is, what, how could we word that?
Right. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily all for like a pole barn looking building, but what he showed me, if we could figure out how to word that.
Sarah, any thoughts on wording around that, that could capture the essence of what we're trying to with the brick, stone, or natural materials, but allow for steel, and frankly, other materials that might be?
Can I, can I say something? I feel like everyone thinks that it could look nice, but we really don't want that really ugly, you know, dollar store kind of look. How do we make sure that we don't end up with that? Can you do anything like, we don't permit it, except if you, if you want to put in a special use permit for that specific facade? Can you do something like that?
That's a little bit harder if you were to do materials, unless it's. We'd have to look at it. I'm trying to think.
I, I totally agree with the guys that you can make all kinds of stuff look nice, and it's a steel building, but if I had to give up that to make sure that a really ugly steel building didn't end up here, okay.
Yeah, there must be some sort of term for it, not in the building industry, I don't know. It would be decorative.
It's like decorative steel.
But I mean, I've seen them that look like cedar shakes, and they look like wood siding. There's some pretty stuff that you can get, so.
I agree.
What, what if we did this? Because I, I agree with the comments there as well, that we kept it where it is now, because at least it's not excluding steel buildings at all. And, and what we could do is, we are going to be looking at this again in this rewrite pretty quickly, like in the next six months, probably, Sarah?
Correct.
And we can bring this back up and spend more time on the wording of that, because there might be some other things of a similar nature that come up and capture it there. Because I'd like to see that addressed as well, that we make sure to allow for some of those items.
I like that.
Jason, does that work?
Yeah, no. Absolutely.
Anybody else thoughts on that?
I think I'm good now.
Okay. 12.1. Commercial. Just, I guess I'd reemphasize, kind of analogous to what we did on vigil, village business, we now have a 5,000 square foot clarification here. Any item on 12.1? The, the public, I'm, I'm looking at the, Mr. Willard's thoughts on this, on page 12.2, under 18 and 19. Thanks, Jason, that's good. Sarah, I'd ask your thoughts, can you, or anybody else here, actually, that can help me understand what, what that meaning might be there with the changes?
I think he just separated out the, the, under B, he put the list from 1202.
Yeah, 1202A.
Okay.
1202, yeah. He would just reiterate that list here, instead of just having these standalone, a couple of things.
So, on 12.1, it says less than 5,000 square feet. 12.2 says equal to or less than 5,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, where are you on 12.2 with that?
The handwritten note on the right. It says with size equal to or less than 5,000 square feet.
Right. Because I think that's where we are, is all of these things in the commercial zone are restricted to 5,000 square feet. And he's just restating that there. It's already up above.
But on 12.1, it says only, must be less than square, 5,000 square feet.
Must be less than.
Right. So, he's bringing all the uses from permitted uses that would be over. If you put the same limitation like we talked about in the village business on all the commercial, and you said, all commercial that are less than 5,000 square feet, and one of these uses is a site plan review, and then anything over 5,000 square feet would be required to do the special use permit, and so that's where his B comes in, is to bring all these uses from the permitted use section down.
So, to boil that down, any building greater than 5,000 square feet in commercial would require a special use. That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
That's why he's suggesting, yes.
Yes. That's what he is suggesting. So, the question is, is that what our intent would be?
Well, what's it say now? How is it now?
I think it's the same situation, right, with the 3,000?
Okay.
Yeah. We only applied it to retail, and we want to do the same kind of thing here.
Sarah, any thoughts on this aspect in the commercial side?
No, I mean, I think that's fine, as long as you're allowing those uses a process, even if it's, you know, over the 5,000 square feet. We don't have a ton of commercial zoning in the township, and, you know, so I'm not too concerned about it. It may slow down some development, because people don't want to go through the public hearing process, or, you know, with the additional meeting, but I don't think that it's a huge, I mean, that would be the difference between the two, is, instead of being potentially one meeting, now you're kind of looking at two meetings, but, you know, I think that that kind of may have a very small impact, if any impact at all, would be the difference between those two. So, if you want to make all of permitted use, or the site plan review has to, can only be up to 5,000 square feet, and be special use for anything over 5,000, that works for me, we can do that.
I kind of feel like if it's commercial, it should be pretty open. I say that with hesitation, because I live right next to some commercial spots, but if it's commercial, it's commercial. I think it should be open.
And so, what does open mean to you?
The, the 5,000 only applying to the grocery store and the convenience stores and everything else, if they wanted to get crazy, and it's commercial.
I didn't understand what you just were saying, Laura.
I'm not sure that I really care on commercial if, if there's a limitation for these other ones.
So, let me, don't, let me put words in your mouth here, but I think, I think what she's saying is, is that the restriction on the 3,000 in the village business made sense, but when it's general commercial, so it's no longer in the visual, village business, that the five, the analogous kind of 5,000 threshold applying to everything, that we may not want to consider that, that we might want to keep it more open for development in that regard.
For just the permitted uses, or for, like, it permitted uses now, it says less than 5,000, and for the special uses, it's anything over four, over 5,000.
I think we've got the same situation there, where we only limited the grocery stores and convenience stores to the 5,000. So, like a motel hotel, Holiday Inn, could be. Could be more than.
No, we've, we, yeah, we've got those limited under the permitted uses to less than 5,000.
Where at?
On the permitted uses, A, on page 12.1.
But under two and three is where we've got the 5,000.
So, if, if we did not, if we did not incorporate the suggestions by Mr. Willard.
We'd go back to 5,000 on the grocery stores and 5,000 on the convenience stores?
Yes. So, all those things would, would.
It, doesn't it seem odd, like a motel hotel, 3,000 wouldn't be very much, would it?
No, a lot of houses are more than that.
Yeah, so, I think it'd be a bad idea to extend that 5,000 to everything else.
Is there a reason to distinguish between that list of permitted uses and the list of special uses, as far as the size? Because if it's a permitted use, and you can be any size you want, you could have, you know, your American Express Travel Center, or your, you know, your bank administrative building, or whatever. You know, they could be huge, which in commercial, you might be right, it doesn't, maybe it doesn't make any difference. So, I'm just wondering, what is the difference then between the permitted and the special use?
So, special use is just about like the types of things we have listed, right?
So, the, let's back, try to back this up a little bit. Let's go with the most basic, which is the permitted use, and maybe test some examples here. The way it's worded now, including the 3,000 square foot, I'm sorry, the 5,000 square foot aspect to grocery stores and convenience stores. So, the way it's worded now, somebody could apply and come in and do a movie theater in a commercial, that's a permitted use. It doesn't matter how big it is, right? Any one of these other aspects they could do, there's no limitation on square footed size, other than things as far as the size of the lot and the footprint relative to the size of the lot. But as far as just in general, if they bought a 100-acre lot, they could put as big a building as they want. They could put a multi-movie theater, and there would be an example. Not saying that's right or wrong, but that they could, that's the way it sits, that's a permitted use. If it's a grocery store, they would have to, it'd have to be under 5,000 square feet to be able to come in here. So, it is interesting that this, a 5,000, a 6,000-foot grocery store would need to have a, would have to be, fall under a special use permit, but a five-movie theater would not.
Yeah.
So, to me, that does suggest that some kind of a limitation on this, on the size, at least to have, it doesn't mean it wouldn't be allowed, it just means it would have to have public notice, and people would have, have a chance to comment on it.
But maybe that should apply to, to everything.
Yeah.
You know, so anything that's going to be over 5,000 is going to need a special permit, a special use permit, yeah.
I think that's fair.
It worked?
The question is, is 5,000 square feet the right size here?
Well, it's not like you're precluding somebody from being over 5,000 square feet. You just have to do it through a special use permit.
Right.
And I don't, I don't know how to differentiate between, you know, would a professional office building, less than 5,000 square feet automatically be permitted? Or shouldn't it also have to be, if it's more than 5,000 square feet and well, that's less than, I'm getting confused.
It does sound like a lot of work to go, well, not that it's too much work, but to go through one by one and say, oh, what is, what's an appropriate limit to put on this? So I suppose if you put 5,000 on everything and they can come in under a special use potentially and get okay.
If they want to be bigger than the 5,000.
Okay. I just think it's so unlikely that we're going to have American Express kind of, where are they going to live in our area? There's no place to live, so.
We don't have housing in this state. I know.
So.
Nobody does.
I guess I would be okay with 5,000 as long as they have an avenue to get the use approved.
So do you think we should put everything in as, they has to be five, under 5,000? If it's over, then it has to have a special use permit? That makes sense to me.
I guess, just because, otherwise I'd say you'd have to go through one by one and say, what is the appropriate limit?
Right. And that gets, that gets too subjective or something.
I guess, to me, it seems that having a limitation makes sense. I struggle with the 5,000 square feet. And I know it's 3,000 at the other, but now we're kind of talking and, you know, look at the Laurie's comments, you know, it's like not, because a lot of these things would probably have to, you know, any, they wouldn't be, almost to the point where many of these things would not even fit within 5,000 square feet. So by definition, you almost want to put them in the special use because it's, you know, I don't think, you know, as can an airplane hangar, as an example, if it's going to be here?
I have no idea how big they are.
5,000 square feet, adult and childcare facility, you know.
I feel like the reason it was put on those is because those are the ones we're worried about.
But those are the ones that are permitted by right? And you're saying that that's why we put those at less than 5,000?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm just saying it's just the 5,000 threshold.
But again, if you've got the same things listed under the 5,000 and you can go over 5,000 with a special use permit, I think that makes sense.
On the flip side, if we have one on here that's, you know, there's no way you're going to have one that's under 5,000, then you might as well remove it from this list and move it. Like, why put it on here? I'm just playing devil's advocate.
But you don't know, you don't know that it's not going to be under 5,000. I mean, it could be. You could have a B and B facility that's less than.
Tag in, Sarah.
Sarah, back to your trusted reference of different examples of buildings that you had quoted in the past. What are some examples of businesses that people might know that are around the 5,000 square foot level or size?
You know, the only one I can think of right now is because I asked Jack to go look it up, was the Green Building. You know, everybody's been asking about that. That's in the Village. But that's right around 7,600. And then 5,000 is the restaurant in Elk Rapids on the, the south, what is that, east corner, Fresh, I want to call it Freshwater.
Riverwalk.
Riverwalk.
Riverwalk, yep. That one's about 5,000 square feet.
So that's a, that's a sizable structure.
Yeah, right. I mean, I think though, I mean, to Laura's point when you, I believe it was Laura that was talking, when you do look at some of these, when you're looking at probably, I mean, maybe the indoor art, music and dance recreational facilities, some of those may be able to be less than 5,000, but those are probably going to be larger. The museums and libraries are probably going to be larger. You know, the trade showrooms, you could get one or the other, but the furniture showrooms is going to be likely larger. Funeral homes is going to be larger. Government buildings will be larger. But.
Okay, one more question, Sarah. Anything on your list that's around, say, 7,500 square feet? What would that be like?
7,000.
Half of a Walgreens.
Walgreens is larger than that. I think Walgreens is around 10 to 15.
It's like 14.5, so half of that would be.
Yeah. You know, it is kind of hard to sit here and try to pick out a number one way or another. I know with the 5,000 for the grocery store and the convenience store, that was because we put that limitation in the village business, you know, so that's why we carried it over here as well. But it could go either direction. I guess, I don't know. I've heard from two people, you know, that kind of have opinions on it, but not really anyone else, you know, to help get movement one way or the other, a majority decision on it.
Okay. Well, this, I think at this point, I think if, you know, we're not precluding anybody from doing it. I do think that the list is kind of, some of these, it's, you know, the 5,000 may almost preclude some of these types being listed here, but it is possible. So I guess I'm okay with the 5,000, but asking for other members to.
Or we could just remove it altogether, go back the way it was.
Yeah.
We can have a.
Hors.
Yeah, I think we need a limit there because of the, I use the example of the movie theaters and AMC putting or whatever it's called.
Love that. I'm, like I said, I'm up for whatever. Commercial to me should be pretty open. 5,000 does seem really small to me now that I think about it, like, not even like a Walgreens size. It's pretty small for commercial.
Jason, you've been relatively quiet. It's not like you.
Well, my, my thought process is, is, so we don't, we have a, what, 15,000 square foot grocery store currently. So he's the only one that's going to be able to have one that big. Everybody else is only going to have, we all have a $3,000 or 3,000 square foot one. So then they got to try to compete with a 15,000 square foot one.
Well, no, I, well, but I think the thing to remember is that this wouldn't preclude them from doing it. It would, it would require public notice and they would have to, it would be a special use. So it would come before the commission. You'd have input. So you could consider all of those. So if it was, you know, my view would be that if somebody wanted to put another 15,000 square foot store in or whatever that is, they could in a commercial section, they would have to, but people would know about it in advance and they'd have an opportunity to weigh in. That's basically what we're saying here. It does not mean that they couldn't. In fact, I would say if it was, you know, good business for the community and people were excited about it, or even if there was some pushback, but a lot of people were, it would probably be something that we would support.
Wait, were you saying, so remind me, Village, or Eastport Market is village business? Or is it commercial?
It's commercial.
Eastport Market's village business.
What was that? Eastport Market?
It's village business.
What I thought you were saying, which I liked the point that I thought you were making, was that, that Eastport Market then, if we said five, even 5,000 for a commercial, somebody put up another, another grocery store down there that was 5,000, they would be competing. Or if we went up to 15, they would still be competing with, with a larger one in the same area. Yeah. Just because they're in village business, it's not a commercial.
But what would happen is if somebody wanted to go across the street and put, just in this, maybe they compete or not compete, but they want to put a similar sized building there. If it's village business, they clearly would need to have a public hearing and go through the process, the site plan review and all of that. If they bought in a commercial spot right near where you are, or not too far from where I am as well, they could, they could, as long as it was under 5,000 feet, do it under this proposal. And if it's graded in 5,000, they would have to do the site plan review. What, what is, we have 3,000? 3,000 is the cutoff for the retail. I'm getting so confused in my numbers now. What if we upped it a little bit from 5,000 to say 6,000 or 7,500 or something like that? How does, how do people think about that? Kept the same?
To cover, you're saying, extending it to everything in the last.
Just to give it a little bit more, to give it, yeah, and maybe give a little bit more reason. There's not going to be a perfect answer here. Just trying to find something that feels better, that gives, you know, enabling people to do what they want, not feeling too restrictive, but at the same time giving us, unable to keep AMC from coming in and putting the movie theater that you want so badly. Is that?
Well, that might not be a bad idea because if, if you, if you go forward in the package, for instance, 12-3, maximum lot coverage shall be 70%. But if we're limiting it to 3,000 to 5,000 square feet, they might not be able to have that lot develop 70%. Is that how I'm reading that?
Yeah.
Maximum lot coverage for all buildings on site shall be 70%. But if we limit how big the building is in the, I mean, I don't even know if that would come into effect. I'm saying as if you lower, if you upped it to maybe 6,000 or 7,500, that might help meet that 70% criteria of covering your lot. Maybe that's not even an issue. Maybe it could stay at 5,000 and still cover 70% of your lot.
Yeah, it depends on the size of the lot and that's going to vary with every, every lot, really.
Well, aren't commercial lots minimum one acre?
I don't know. Are they minimum one acre?
So that's approximately 44,000 square feet. So if five or six or seven thousand
Is nothing.
square foot building is, yeah, it's not even close to maxing that out.
Sarah, why didn't we think of this? The whole, the whole, all the other things listed and 5,000 not being, oh, just because we were focused on those two, huh?
I guess it's maximum lot coverage.
Yeah, we're talking in the village business. I mean, is it something that we'd want to come back to and consider and discuss? Or is it something that's really important to you right at the moment that you'd want to make sure got into this amendment? You know, right now as it is, we don't have those size limitations on, I mean, any of the uses in the commercial district. We don't have size limitations on them. So the size limitations to the grocery store and convenience store, that's new language because we were talking about the village districts. So we definitely could come back and try to pick a size unless there's a, a big concern currently that we'd want to try to, to limit the size on some of the uses or if we could back to talk about it with the rewrite.
I'm going to suggest this. I'm going to suggest us take it from 5,000 to 6,000. That's twice as big as the village business. Gives a little bit more openness and then call it a day. Amen. People good with that?
I'm good with that.
Jason, you live with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that just for the, for the permitted uses?
Well, that's second, I was going to start there, but.
I just wondered, how's that going to fit with the next?
Sure.
Next section.
And just to be clear, you were saying 6,000 for everything, not just the two that we called out?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you would do, if it's going to be more than 6,000, it would need a special use permit?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm satisfied with that.
Sarah, did you hear that?
So you're doing less than 6,000, our site plan, anything over 6,000 is special use?
Yes.
That's right.
Andy, are we considering all of the businesses on 12-1 and 12-2 as able, as more or less a permitted use as long as the square footage is under that amount?
I think it's 12-1.
Ask your question again, please, Bill.
The businesses listed on page 12.1 and 12.2.
We're going to combine them?
Are you going to combine them, make them all permitted uses?
If they're less than.
If they're less than 6,000 or, yeah, less than 6,000 square feet.
And special use permit required if they're over 6,000 square feet. But it would be for the whole list of these things combined?
Yeah.
I think that'd be a bad idea unless, I mean, Jason probably thinks this is a very bad idea. We've got number 14 on 12-2, that, that being permitted under 6,000.
But that's.
I, I'm just saying, there's, there's some things in there that I think probably people intentionally put in the special use.
But I thought we don't, we don't. Right. I thought, as far as 14 goes, I thought we don't allow any sexually oriented businesses.
We must somewhere, Sarah said. So we shoved them in the commercial district.
We tried to get that tossed last meeting, but Sarah said that you have, you have to offer it. All townships have to offer that.
I think what we're saying here, let me just again, take another stab at this. So we're, let's take the 6,000. We think we have agreement on that. And we're saying everything under 12.02A, those types of businesses, we would say if they were under 6,000 square feet in one of those types, they could fall in under permitted use, would not require the, the special use permit considerations, correct? That's what we're saying, that we're starting there. Then we're saying under special uses, all of these items are of a different nature. And we're saying those items on that list are of such that regardless of size, they would require a special use. And item 14 is in particular a good example of one. We're not saying, I don't think our intent with the 6,000 was to say you could have an even larger number 14. So, and I think that that's, to me, I guess I would suggest that we keep the 6,000 applied to the list on page, under A, and then the other ones we keep regardless.
Keep what regardless?
I'm sorry, keep under, as special uses, yes. That doesn't matter if it's 1,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet, it's a special use.
That makes sense to me. Well, at least for some.
Is everybody okay with that? Sorry, no movie theater.
So there's no size requirement on the special uses? If it's on the list, doesn't matter how big it is, it's going to have to have a special use permit?
Well, then that's another question. Do we have a, a bigger number for anything over 20,000 square feet period is a special use?
No.
To me, everything's coming, would come forward anyway. And I guess, Sarah, a question would be if, if, if it, if it has to be under 6,000 square feet, it's a special, I'm sorry, if it, if it's over 6,000 square feet, it has to be a special use regardless. And if, on items under A. And if it's these other ones, then regardless of size, it would be a special use.
Right.
And it, and so a giant building or a little building, right? So I think we have our, effectively our ability to view, review. So I think we have our, effectively our ability to view, review something as a, as a point of just size alone. Because under this, anything that's, say, greater than 10,000 square feet or 10,000 square foot building would have to come forward with a site plan review. Right? I think you're nodding, correct, Sarah?
Yeah, sorry, yeah. I need to nod bigger.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
So under items 18 and 19 under A, we did call out grocery stores more than 5,000 square feet. So I think we would, well, one item would be to just, because grocery stores.
Just leave them on that list and take them off the under, what, 6,000 square feet?
What, what, where are we at?
So, so I'm looking under 12.2, items number 18 and 19. We have to address these because now we've got a 5,000 square foot threshold here.
Oh, yeah.
So we would just say, I would probably just put an item B and say all items listed in 10.2, 12.2, that are over 6,000 square feet are a special use. So 18 and 19 would go away because we bring them down as being larger than that 6,000 in A to be a special use permit.
And then we lose our max. I forgot that we had that.
So that would come off of the permitted uses list?
Right.
Okay. So two and three would be gone.
So let me understand then, so for items 18 and 19 then, what, what was the suggestion around those?
Well, what I would do is because we made everything in item 12.02, we made everything that was larger than 6,000 a special use permit. We would then in the special use section just say anything listed above that's larger than that becomes a special use, like we did in the village district. So then that section is repetitive, 18 and 19 is repetitive, so we would just strike those out.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Let's move on to page 12.3. 12.4.
You still have that steel exterior issue under C.
And we said we're gonna revisit that another time, right?
Well.
Yes, we were. That's what we said. Can we just change that to facade shall be constructed of high quality materials period? And leave it like that for now and come back and revisit if we want to restrict that more later?
So say it again, Barbara?
Facades shall be constructed with high quality materials period.
I like that.
Yeah, because some of those things you're talking about would be high quality.
Yep.
And that's why you like them, so.
I think then get rid of it altogether if you're gonna do that. I think the whole point of C was to keep the dollar store looking store out of the area.
Well, yeah, I think, I guess I, if somebody's gonna build a pole barn type structure that any portion facing the road just didn't look like a pole barn type structure, you could have the rest of it, the sides in the back could be just fine, but the front would need to look nice.
Oh, so you're saying keep the, the last sentence? Or no? Like keeping or?
I think for now, we would keep the sentence. The, the steel exterior should not be allowed in facades, not facing the right, road right of way for now.
So Brenda's just saying get rid of the examples of brickstone or other natural materials?
That's what she's suggesting and help me.
Were you thinking of getting rid of the last sentence too, Barbara?
Yeah.
The whole thing.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
High quality materials and then just.
Period.
And then just, how do we then keep it from looking like a pole barn all the way around then?
Because it wouldn't be high quality materials, would it?
How do you define that? I paid premium price for this crap. Yeah. Right?
True.
Yeah, I think that striking that would open us up because you could have really high quality steel and meet that definition. And then they could juice you that we wouldn't have the ability to push back.
Okay, well, just leave it for now, like we did the other one.
Okay, so, yeah, let's keep that the way it is then. And then we'll revisit again when we look at the rewrite. That's it for all of the content here. Any other kind of closing plans or discuss, plans, discussion on this item before we? So now, I think, Sarah, from a process standpoint, with these changes, we've had the, the public hearing, we've received some public commentary, we've incorporated some of that. We've, I think, reached agreement on a document going forward. The next step is it moves ahead to be approved by the board, correct?
Yeah, did you open it to the public that's sitting in the audience to allow them to speak?
Yes. Very early on. At least I thought I did.
Well, you did for public comment, but I don't necessarily know if we did when we started the hearing.
Right, and there's probably comment after the hearing anyway on your agenda.
Okay, yeah, so yes, we do have another item on the agenda, so we could open it back up for public commentary now.
Yeah, I'd open it just real quick, there's not a big audience, so if anybody has any public comment from the public and then we'll close that and we'll move forward.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. So I think it will close out the discussion here and then open it up for public commentary. Anybody who has some public commentary that would like to come forward, please fill out the comment card and hand it to Lori here?
Nope.
There is none. Just opened it and there was none, Sarah?
Closed.
We now close the public comment, commentary and.
And public hearing.
And the public hearing and now move to a vote of a decision. So. Would somebody make a motion? Is anybody willing to make a motion to forward the amendments that we've agreed upon to the board for approval?
I so move. I move that we, we forward our recommendations as we've discussed them here tonight for further approval.
Everybody hear his motion? Anybody second it?
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on this. Yes.
I'm sorry, guys. In order to make this legal, which I want to do, you gotta have further discussion before you can vote.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure that somebody like Jackie doesn't need us to like list out anything. Sarah's got it all, right? You, you took notes, cool. Cool, cool.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I have no further discussion.
Denise, you good with this?
I'm good.
Okay, move it to a roll call vote. Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Denise? Chairman says approves and agrees. Motion's passed. Move forward to the, uh, all our recommendations to the board for approval at the next meeting. Sarah, when is that?
Um, the next boarding meeting will be on, will be January because it does have to go through the counties. So we'll forward that on to the county for their, um, their next meeting and so we'll be back in front of the Port Lake Township Board in January.
Okay, great. So they'll come forward in, in January. So, um, I think one other item I wanted to take a few minutes tonight to talk about was our, it was item C under this purpose of the meeting was around kind of future strategic planning discussions. I guess we have a meeting next week, a special meeting already. And because one of our commission members, Bill DeVore, couldn't be here tonight, and I know he had some pretty strong and great ideas around this as well, I, I would suggest that maybe, assuming he can be here next week, is, is, can everybody be here next week for our meeting? You're not gonna be able to be here, Bob? Okay.
I'll be leaving tomorrow and be back in town on the 16th.
Okay. How about other folks, other members here next week?
What, what day next week?
I think it's the 14th.
That's our regular meeting.
That's our regular meeting.
Yes.
Planning Commission meeting. Is that the meeting you're talking about?
Yes, I thought it was a special one, but maybe it is a regular.
No.
It's regular, that's our thought. Okay.
Okay. Yeah. So, because we have several items on that agenda that's pretty heavy already, but I, but we could talk, defer this last item to next week and maybe I could, Bob, do you have any thoughts in particular you'd want to share around kind of future forward? Who was, what was that? I couldn't hear that.
I think it's lagging or something.
Oh, that's feedback? Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you talking, so I was trying to listen to the YouTube clip, but I didn't link it up, so that was my fault. I apologize.
Okay, thanks.
So in answer to your question, yes, I just would like to, you know, reiterate that we need to get started on the, uh, mat, or the airport zoning ordinance, so whenever we can work that into the schedule, I'd like to get started on that.
So I understand that we're gonna be meeting the third Wednesday, starting next year? Or is that the CBA?
That's the CBA.
We haven't changed anything.
That's the CBA, the third Wednesday will be the CBA.
Got it, okay.
Is our meeting changing in January as well?
We were gonna talk about it at next week's meeting.
Okay.
So Bob, just because, so we will defer this next item, the scheduling meeting part to next week. And, uh, just to give you a heads up on it and kind of just for folks to think about, the, the main items would be going into next year would be review of the master plan, the zoning rewrite, which I've already talked with Sarah a bit about kind of getting a process set up so as sections are done with the steering committee, they come to the planning commission for us to look at, so we don't get everything in one big batch because it'd be overwhelming and that way we can have a chance to review things. Obviously, the, the airpark aspect of the zoning, considering that, that's high priority as well. So those three items together would be kind of, we want to map out a process for getting those things moving quickly. So, you know, Sarah, do you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I can put together for the regular meeting next week, a couple of kind of scheduling, what numbers and, you know, those items for when you're looking at it. Right now, I don't have anything or anticipate anything for the January meeting, so we might be able to get started talking about a couple of things, um, you know, unless an application comes out. And then if we start getting busy with applications, we may have to kind of do a, a special meeting every now and then just to keep everything moving forward.
Okay. Great, thank you. They're not, can they hear me right now? Okay, thank you. So I think that completes the items on the agenda we had for commentary tonight or for to cover tonight. We have, I think, general public commentary for any open item. If there's anybody that has any comments they would like to make this evening would be the last item on our agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. We have a, I'm sure everybody knows that we have a referendum pending on the board's decision of August 17th to rezone the Vermeer parcel on M88. And, um, I don't know whether, um, we can legally address the special, special use permit he has filed for be, as long as that referendum is pending. I think we need to have some legal opinion on what that means and whether that would be legal to, to address his special use permit, provide, yeah, special use permit, since that referendum is pending. Because what it would do effectively is it would deprive the citizens of their right to vote on the referendum if we just say, oh, well then that's gone because he's applied for a special use permit. I don't know what, technically, I don't know what the procedure is. How do we deal with these things together? And so I would suggest that you, as chair of the planning commission, seek a legal opinion on how the one impacts the other and what are we supposed to do with them?
Okay, so Sarah, I guess I'd ask your thoughts on that as far as both the question or thought that Barbara had, has raised, and then also how we could get input from counsel on those two things kind of simultaneous. So one is the ongoing referendum regarding the actual rezoning decision itself and then at the same time kind of proceeding forward with a special use permit on the same, basically the same.
Use of property.
Use of property, yes. Not the same, I was gonna say same application, but it's not because it's a different type of application.
I can ask the attorney about that. I mean, I would think, I would hate to think that because you have a referendum on your property, you can't use it in any way. He's applying for the special use permit under the village residential zoning classification, which it is still zoned that since the referendum's in place, but I will double check with him to make sure that, um, everything's good, that they can continue to move forward.
Well, and that we can continue to move forward. I don't want to get in a situation where we get accused of or sued and are held liable for denying the citizens their right to vote on a referendum that's already been announced and pending and supposed to be in the, in the pipeline for a vote at the next election. And I don't know how the, applying for the special use permit affects that or how does that affect the application for the special use permit? Um, and I know that they, they recently had a case in Traverse City where it was a right of the citizens to vote on an issue and it had been denied by the procedure that the city took on a development where the citizens had several years ago amended the charter to provide that if a building is going to be over 60 feet in height, the citizen had a right to vote on the, on the development and say yea or nay to it, to the design and the height. And, uh, some developer wanted to put up a building that they said was, the city said was 60 feet. And in actuality, if you measured it from the foundation to the top of everything on it, it was 79 feet. And they were, they said to the citizens, sorry, you don't get to vote on it because the way we calculate height, we don't include elevator shafts and antennas and tennis courts and all this other stuff that's up on the roof. We don't include that. And the court said, uh-uh, uh, citizens have a right to vote on it because it is 79 feet, that is in excess of 60 feet. And they got their butts handed to them because the citizens were outraged that they didn't get their opportunity to vote on that. So I just don't want us to be, end up in that position. So that's why I think we need this.
Yep, understood. I will ask the attorney about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, then Sarah, let's, you and I talk about that as well. Because I guess it's a, it's a fair question and a good question. And I also think that, um, that, because my understanding of the referendum is it's addressing the nature of the rezoning itself, not a particular, so the, it was actually rezoning going from residential to commercial, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, residential to village business, okay. So, and in this case, the. I'm sorry, residential to village business, okay. So, and in this case, the special use permit kind of bypasses that, so to speak.
Right, it doesn't end run around the citizen vote, and I don't know if that's legal.
Well, the vote is on if it should be zoned business or not. So if it, the public would still get to vote on if it should be basically rezoned or if the rezon was appropriate. But, you know, it, we don't, I'll, I'll ask the attorney, and that way when we get to the meeting, we'll have that decision, and it'll be clear for everyone.
If you could get, if you could get something in writing, Sarah, from the attorney, an opinion, so that we have something in writing, it's called a CYA, you know, if we could have that in our file at the next meeting before we do any consideration of the special use permit, that would be appreciated.
Yep, I will get with him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, good thoughts. So I guess we open up for public commentary, and this could be on any item beyond the agenda. If there's any thoughts, anybody in the public that would like to come forward, please do so.
I think you exhausted your.
I just have one comment. We were talking about the airport hangers, the airplane hangers, and we were talking about how big they need to be, a minimum, and I don't know if you guys are trying to limit airport hangers or what, but the minimum airport hanger, I was surprised, is only 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
That most governments will allow in their airports.
Okay.
I thought they would be a lot bigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you do Jackie a favor and state your name and address?
Oh, yeah, David Taylor, 5844 North M88, South Atlantic District, Torres Lake House of Residence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy.
Absolutely.
Bill Spriner, 5903 M88. Just a reminder, I'm always on the record, I apologize. You gotta turn it on.
Can't, you're kind of quiet, Bill.
I'm urging the commission to look at putting in our zoning ordinance as criteria for rezoning. I know you've heard me say that before, but I urge you to do that sooner than later. And if, when you do do that, if you would refer to Mr. Langworthy, who we paid a fair amount of money for, his criteria seems to work pretty good, so I would ask you to consider that if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks for the reminder, Bill.
And I think on that particular point, because I, I, I agree with that, and I, my own experience with the criteria were when I actually had my own zoning board of appeals application, probably two years ago now, and, and there were criteria that were laid out I could follow in there, and it was helpful. And I remember the CBA going through those criteria and bouncing things across that, and that was, that was an important aspect. So I can appreciate the thought. So Sarah, again, I think if you could, when we start thinking of that planning, what we can talk about next week, to make sure we address that, maybe early on in some of the reviews of the rewrite, that would be a great place to put that.
Yeah, all of our ordinance does have criteria in them for the rezoning portion, so that will be in there for sure.
So with that, if there's any other thoughts from the commission tonight?
I'd like to thank Mr. Willard for his time and his efforts.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Willard, if you're, if you're listening in tonight. Anybody else? With that, can I motion to end the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to end this meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.